Well, I'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll called. Diane.
Mayor Skug.
President.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Next item, discussion on a professional design services agreement with Lion Engineering for the Sunset Lane Improvement Project. Norm?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you have before you may look a little familiar. We talked about an intergovernmental agreement that we entered into with Yavapai County here back in October. So, this project is a project partnership, basically joint with Yavapai County. So, what is it? Sunset Lane? The existing two-lane road, basically between Prescott East and Pineview, has been, I guess local residents have asked for a long time about some urbanization improvements and the like. Widen the road because there's lots of pedestrian access there, plus increase traffic along Prescott East to our commercial center there in the core of the town. We've seen a great increase on traffic there on Sunset Lane in that particular stretch. So, as I mentioned before, this is a partnership with Yavapai County. You may recall, Supervisor Smith has been championing this particular project for a couple of years now, and it's come to the point now that we've actually sent it out for design. And first was the government agreement to get the funding in place and talk about how our partnership's going to work. So, Supervisor Smith is in the office, and the audience would like to call him up after I finish. A few other items to explain a little more about the project and some of the background.
Person number one.
As I mentioned, we signed an intergovernmental agreement about the funding that was going to take place here back in October. The next phase that we put into motion was soliciting engineers in order to design this project. So, project's about forty-five hundred feet long. As you can see, the exhibit you have up above you, the reason for the partnership is part of this project is in the incorporated town of Prescott Valley that we maintain, existing Sunset Lane. And you can see the darker section up there with Yavapai County is currently maintained by Yavapai County. So, to improve the roadway, it included both of our governing bodies that maintain a certain stretch. So, that's why the partnership we've talked about with Yavapai County. As I go back to, we solicited for next in order to get this project in motion, design services. We did receive seven professional engineering firms from our solicit for design services from our statement of qualifications. We shortlisted three of those particular submissions, and we interviewed the three most qualified engineers, and we did come down to the most qualified engineering firm, which is local Lion Engineering, in order to enter into negotiations for design services and come up with a price. So, we've gone through that process, and what you have before tonight would be for your consideration is of the design contract to Lion Engineering. Little more background about the particular project. Didn't want to mention the design team. I had the pleasure of serving on the committee with Byron Jaspers and also Roger McCormick with Yavapai County was on the design team, in addition to Dan Cherry. And in our own department, it was myself and Ron Pine. These partnerships are kind of unique. One thing that was fun about this project is I've been doing projects with Byron Jaspers the last twenty-five years. So, the partnership has always been that we've done a lot of co-projects with other agents we've worked for, or even cooperating with other projects in the past. Dan Cherry, you may be familiar with, he's the Flood Control Director. He always helps us every year with our flood control funding. So, very good partnership with Dan. We're all old cohorts, been working together for years. So, that was an easy process in order to get together and collaborate on who was the best engineering firm to select him. So, that's the engineering team that helped select Lion Engineering. A little about the project as we move forward from here. This is a very complicated design, very challenging with some of the existing drainage, stormwater management problems we have. Anytime you do a corridor like this with only fifty feet of right-of-way, we're basically going to use up all the right-of-way with. As you see, the detail up there, we're going to have three lanes, curb, gutter, and sidewalk. We'll have six inches on each side when we get done with this improvement. So, challenging to an engineer means it's going to have a lot of fun for all of us. So, I'd be remiss to some of the utility improvements. Neil Wadsworth with Utility Department at the town will be involved with water infrastructure improvement, in addition to, we may look at even some sewer infrastructure improvement for future sewer in the unincorporated area that doesn't have current sewerage. So, always want to be smart. You do this significant design, you've got to look at a lot of things to not do any negative impact due to what's there existing. One other thing we like to do too, anytime you do a big corridor like this, we will partner with other utility companies. Obviously, we haven't started design yet, but we may see some of the other utilities may want to upgrade their facility for better service on a big corridor like this. They may upsize a particular main. We've seen on other projects we've done in the past year in Prescott Valley, like Robert Road, as I point out to people, sometimes the underground improvement is as more substantial than the above-ground paving, extra lanes, just do all the utility service. So, we will take about a year to design this, work very closely with other utility companies to see what their service needs may be, or future service needs, and look at the corridors. I think it's important to note, not only we get curb, gutter, and sidewalk, but we're also proposing new streetlights at every intersection, which is similar to what our subdivision standard is in arterial collector roadways for pedestrian mobility. Speaking about the public with the particular design constraints, we'll have a couple of public meetings. It will be very important to us to seek a public comment as the design moves forward to make sure we address everything we can and get the public's confidence, and whatever comments they have as we move forward with the final design. So, design will take about a year, and we anticipate some utility realizations will take part. So, once this design is done, we don't anticipate starting this project until about July of eighteen. So, it's a long horizon, but there's a lot of work to be done and lots of stakeholders to get involved with, lots of public involvement to make sure when we come up that final set of plans, everything has been vetted, and when we move forward, everyone understands what that significant improvement's going to be. Ultimately, we anticipate this project's going to be about $6 million, about forty-five hundred feet of road. So, lots of storm drain improvement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, utility improvements, be wonderful once it's done, and it'll be a fun, exciting project to work on. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this proposal before you for a design contract toward the local Lion Engineering.
Questions, anyone? Mary?
I just appreciate all the work so far that's been put into it, and I appreciate going forward. That road is getting very busy and a lot of traffic on it with the cars, the people walking. Yeah, so, yeah, definitely, the sooner the better.
And we've been monitoring that with, you know, the engineering. I know Yavapai County's done quite a bit of traffic council. We're seeing significant exponential-type traffic growth. I know Supervisor Smith has been, you know, approaching us all the time to make sure that we work together to work this out.
Well, now that we have the Prescott East Highway running through into, you know, Granville, that also is generating a lot.
It is. There's lots of better mobility in there, so it's time.
Yeah. Thank you, Norm. Thank you, Jack.
Other questions? Laura?
The sidewalks will be the entire length of the project?
Yes, that is correct. So, the project does go from Prescott East all the way to the connection at Pineview.
Good. And are you concerned about the timelines and all? Since you've worked with this company before, you know what their work ethic is.
Oh, we have. Lion Engineering's completed many designs for us, so we're very confident with the work they've done. They've done very similar projects for the town in the past too, with underground storm drain and widening. You may recall, they did some thirty percent plans for the Robert Road, which is somewhat of a similar project. But you did mention the timelines. To do a project this magnitude takes lots of collaboration and making sure everything gets into place. It's going to be a really busy corridor when you look at the utility upgrades, the storm drain pipes, and, once again, there's only these six inches of right-of-way on each side. So, we'll have to approach all the property owners to get rights of entry, construction, temporary construction easements, very similar to Robert Road. Takes a long time to get that all into place and get the confidence that everything's been vetted and we're ready to go with the final design.
And, Norm, isn't it safe to say that you're not even looking at groundbreaking for about two, two-and-a-half years from now?
Correct.
Okay. By the time you get all the utilities out of the way, and also during that time, we're accumulating dollars to pay our share of this.
Good. Other questions, comments?
I just wanted to reconfirm, we did say we're putting sidewalks on both sides?
Yes. That's a detail that depicts, you can see there's five-foot sidewalks on both sides.
Okay. Thank you.
Marty, no? Any other questions?
Mayor, did you want to call Jack Smith up?
Do what?
Did you want to call Jack Smith in?
May I just bring Jack Smith up? Jack, you and I introduce yourself. I know everybody knows you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Supervisor Jack Smith. I'm with the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, and yes, this is an awesome project. It is going to take some time because Yavapai County's doing the same thing. We're accumulating some money to be able to facilitate this. And the difference is, is when you pass by coals and you're going down Sunset Lane, you will not see a difference in any of the infrastructure that's being put in until you get down to the end of Prescott East Highway. We want to make sure that that has sidewalks on both sides to facilitate moving pedestrian traffic, maybe even some wheelchair traffic, maybe, you know, carriages and whatnot, but also being able to facilitate turns in that area. Because right now, as you know, we've had a huge amount of vehicular issues on those highways. One, running off the roadway into a yard. I've seen a gentleman that was on a motor scooter, elderly gentleman, was in the ditch. The fire department had to go and get him and take him to the hospital and whatnot, and he still travels that roadway at least twice a week. So, it doesn't make any sense from the county standpoint, at the county line, to stop the improvements when in reality, you're still going to have that traffic and the pedestrian and everything going through there. So, we want to continue it, and it's great to hear that we're going to have utilities such as APS being worked on for lighting in that area as well. So, talk about traffic counts, just real quick. Initially, there was, it started out thirty-five hundred cars per twenty-four-hour period. We're going through that area at an average speed of about thirty-two miles per hour. Beyond that, when Walmart was built, it actually went up to fifty-five hundred cars in a twenty-four-hour period, same amount of speed. We've seen that volume reduce slightly because of the opening of the Granville Connector into the Prescott East Highway, but we've also seen the volumes on Prescott East Highway have tripled in the last, you know, several months since that has opened. So, but we've had no real safety concerns on that one, and Prescott East Highway is large enough to where we could widen that to have two lanes on each direction if need be. So, but the right-of-way is going to be a challenge. The engineering firm that is doing this does have a hard row to hoe because we're talking probably some retaining walls, possibly moving it up or down in certain areas and so forth, so.
Other questions, comments?
I probably do see that Prescott East Highway turning into more lanes than just what it has.
Most likely, yeah. We're monitoring it with the volume, so we're keeping in real good contact. Norm is an amazing engineer, and he keeps his ear to the ground at what's going on, so we keep in contact. Great partnership, as he said.
Thank you, Jack.
We really appreciate it.
Other questions, comments? Jack, we appreciate that. I think this is going to be a great project. It's going to take a little while, but.
Yeah, and I actually approached Norm about that and Byron as well. It's like, is there any way where you can push this project, bring it back a little bit, and start it a little sooner? But if you want to do it right, you take your time, you do it right the first time, you don't dig up roads after the fact when you found out that you should have done this, that, or the other. So, it makes perfect sense to do it on the timeline that we have in place.
The engineering firm is a good one.
Absolutely.
We've used them a lot.
Yeah, Lions, yep.
I think we're going to get good results. Other questions, comments? Anything else, Jack?
No. Looking forward to this.
Appreciate you coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other, we'll move on to number four, council vacancy candidate presentations. And I believe we're going to allow everyone, what is it, ten minutes for each person to make their comments, introduce yourself, and we're going to start with David W. Arndt. David, you're up. Thank you. Good to see you. Appreciate you coming in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is David Arndt. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself and why I would be an asset to our town council. I began working at twelve years old, starting with a paper route. At sixteen, I purchased my first house and became a landlord. I started my own business, David Arndt Sanitation, at nineteen, growing over the years from one person and one truck to twenty-three employees and seven trucks. In the fall of 2015, I sold my business and retired. Tired of the big city life, I started Googling, trying to find a good place to live, and I ended up with Prescott Valley. So, I moved out here, this sounded like the purpose place to live, so I flew out here in December from South Carolina. That's where my southern accent came from. And I bought a house out here in Viewpoint West, subdivision. After settling in, we became, decided to look for local churches. We shopped around, and I became a member of First Southern Baptist Church of Prescott Valley, where now I'm a deacon, in the Deacon Training Program, and also served on the stewardship committee. I've always, always been interested in politics, and in the past, I've served on several boards in national organizations. I've served as treasurer to YMCA and also on the FCA. Now that I retired, I'd like to get involved in local government. These are my years of experience in negotiation, problems, resolutions, and public service to help my fellow citizens. Having a love for numbers, my hobbies include trading on the stock market and meeting my friends at cards. I feel that my honesty, my trustworthiness, and my hard-working efforts will be of benefit for the town council. Thank you. Do you have any questions I can ask you for you?
Anyone? We're going to have questions next time around, so there won't be any questions.
Thank you very much.
We do appreciate you coming in. We had some, we had some great resumes, which was just great. Next, number two would be Bill Williams. Mr. Williams.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I'd like to tell you about my unique qualifications that would make me a great council member. I went to grade school, high school, college down in Phoenix, and I bought a house up here in 2008 because this is a wonderful place to live. Between high school and college, I joined the Air Force. I'm proud to say I'm a veteran. I come from a patriotic family. Both mom and dad's sides of the family had men that served in either the military as firefighters or as police officers. I used the GI Bill to get a master's degree in communications and journalism. I have written articles about how patriotic Prescott Valley is, and one of those articles is in my application packet. There's also a thank-you note from your chief of police in there, signed by him and his officers. I wasn't expecting a thank-you note. I had taken cookies and a note to our police department the day after the Dallas police officers were brutally shot and killed, and my note simply said, "I stand with you." Our police officers are professional, they show up, and they have solved crimes in my neighborhood. When I moved up here in 2008 from Phoenix, I worked as your Public Information Officer for the Arizona Department of Transportation in the Prescott Valley office. Later on, I went back to college and earned a paralegal degree at Yavapai College. This education, knowledge, and experience, I think, will be assets to you when I work with you on ordinances, resolutions, and contracts. In a moment, I'm going to give you a homework assignment, so Mayor, Council, have a pen and paper handy. What I believe in in serving the taxpayers and watching over their money in a frugal way, you're in the middle of an eighty-two-million-dollar budget, according to your budget expert, and if you hire me, I promise to help you watch your expenditures very closely. I believe the town can do better, and I'll cite some examples, but I don't want you to think I'm here to gripe and complain. They're just examples on how y'all can do better, or how we can do better. There's another article in my packet about explosive growth in Yavapai County and how planners are dealing with that growth. That should show that I'm in touch with this area and I understand your challenges. With our town's growth, we are feeling growing pains, obviously. For the first time in history, our population has exceeded Prescott. I'm neither pro-growth or no-growth. What I will be is a smart-growth councilman. When it was explained to me how your new tax would provide funding for police and roads because the downturn in the economy reduced tax revenues, causing projects to be deferred, I was okay with that. You're in the middle of a $2.9-million road project, but we taxpayers can't tell that. My neighbors want me to find out why your new paving looks so bad. So, the homework assignment is to drive down, I've picked a road, drive down Summer Drive between Navajo and Robert Road, and ask yourselves this question. Why are you paid so much for such an awful, brand-new paving project? And it's not just Summer Drive. I could take you for a half-hour tour, and you would say, "We did that on that road?" I walk and hike for exercise, and I'm very concerned with the disrepair I see, most notably in Fane Park, parts of Mountain Valley Park, and the Iron King Trail. I would hope you're looking into public-private partnerships, such as with the developers who are putting in a few hundred homes and destroying the Iron King Trail. They broke it, make them pay for it. Now, maybe you're doing all of this, and maybe you have solutions and plans to address some of these things, but you're not proactively communicating out to the taxpayers. When I stood on the top of the Fane Park Dam a couple of months ago and looked down at the seventy-five-foot drop off the east side a couple of months ago, a couple of things ran through my mind. What if a child fell to his death? And who removed the chain link, barrier, and the safety rail that should have prevented me from walking across the dam? If you hire me, I'll help you steer clear of these kinds of liabilities, and I'll urge the department heads to think of the negative impact that visuals of unmaintained trails and walkways create for the taxpayer. You have the perfect communications tool to tell us what you're accomplishing. It's your own town newsletter. I receive it electronically. I'm sure some people get it in the mail. But last month, half of the newsletter was a handout from ADOT on how to drive when snow is on the road. Now, we've all seen the Looney Tunes that get out on Highway 89A and 69 when there's a little frost, and we know that. But why didn't you do an in-depth article on the eighty-two-million-dollar budget with specific line items explaining to all of us what you're up to? Will you finish the paving project? You could have done an article on that, or one on how to fix Fane Lake and the dam and the trails. Because if you tell us, if you use community outreach properly to tell us what your plan is, it makes you look smart. And then we, the taxpayers, feel like you have things under control. I was really surprised that you spent $377,000 on the new road up the side of Glassford Hill. Notice I didn't call it a trail. It's a fifteen-foot-wide bulldoze road, and it may have scared off a lot of four-legged creatures. The signs going up the trail brag about, "We've got antelope, deer, javelina, somebody spotted a mountain lion once." Do you think they're really there after you bulldozed a fifteen-foot-wide road? Notice I'm not naming names. I said this is not my gripe session. I'm simply offering examples of what we can do better together. We also need to revisit codes and the enforcement of codes because a lot of taxpayers are growing weary of seeing five cars, a refrigerator, and a couch in front lawns.
Can you finish in about thirty seconds?
When I was with ADOT, I won four awards for the outreach efforts I did with the news media and the taxpayers. This month, I turn sixty-two, and I'm going to take the government check and retire, and that means I'll have plenty of time to help you on these and other important issues. Thanks for your time. Don't forget the homework assignment.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, the next one is Jimmy Cox.
Greetings, Mr. Cox. Good to see you.
My name is Jim Cox. I moved to Prescott Valley about four years ago, a little over four years ago. I'd like to run through some of my activities. I've been retired about thirteen years now. I graduated from Winslow High School in 1961. Sixty-one to sixty-two, I attended ASU, Arizona State University, at Tempe for one year. From 1962 to 64, I worked for the Santa Fe Railroad. I was a signal, with a signal group. I was there for a few months, and they promoted me to a signal maintainer, had my own company vehicle, and was in charge of some people. Nineteen sixty-four to sixty-six, I attended Northern Arizona University in Flagstaff. From sixty-six to 1970, I served in the United States Army. I signed up, I joined the Army for a four-year contract. I was in the Army Security Agency. After a year, I was accepted to Officer Candidate School. I graduated from Officer Candidate School and served an additional two years in the Nineteen seventy to seventy-one, I went back to Northern Arizona University, got my degree in, a four-year degree in Business Administration. I majored in Finance. In 1971 to 2001, I was a small business owner. I had a real estate and insurance business for over thirty years. I had several employees that worked for me. I work well with people, and I love to work with people. Also, in 1971, or excuse me, 1972 to 2003, I also worked for the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. So, I had the business plus also worked for the railroad at the same time. In 2003, I am present retired from both my small business and the railroad. I am currently, let me give you a little bit, early in 1980, I can't remember the exact years, but 1980s sometime, I ran for city council in Winslow, Arizona. I was elected as a city councilman for four years. I'm currently on the board of the Prescott Valley Municipal Property Corporation, and that term expires November 2017. I took the Prescott Valley Citizens Academy a couple of years ago. I thoroughly enjoyed that. What a wonderful city you have, and the leadership you have in all the departments. I learned a great deal from that. I think that's one of the reasons why I wanted to serve some way in the community. And I get to work with Larry occasionally, at least once a year anyway. We're not too busy on that particular project, and so, and looking over the commitment that you have in bonding and stuff like that, I've asked Larry on occasion when we were talking, that I'm a concerned citizen, concerned about the taxpayers' dollars, and that we have enough money to pay for the things that we're doing, and you guys are paying down that debt. That's a commitment, that's a compliment to this council, what a wonderful thing that is. Also, you have a rainy day fund, which is important to have because if we come through another recession, then that might come into effect, where you won't have to bond or borrow money, you'll have money available to pay expenses. I've looked over your mission statement, Prescott Valley Mission Statement, and I oh hardly agree with that. You know, I think that's a wonderful thing that you have. The Prescott Valley is inspired and sustained dramatic, emotive, and productive community growth through combined talents of our citizens, and I think that's important. We have eleven citizens out here, including myself, applying for this particular position. I feel honored to be even considered for that, and I think we have some great talent here, and we'll witness that in the case. Also, I looked at the goals. Every one of the goals I firmly believe in, and as you as council members, I know you probably keep those in mind, and as you do that, this city will continue to grow. In just my four short years, I'm just amazed at the growth we've had. I'm amazed at the roads that you guys have done. I live in Prescott Pronghorn Ranch, and the road was good, and I thought it was really good, but then you came in and did the top seal and everything, and it even made it better. I know I'm out of my time, and I gratefully appreciate you giving me an opportunity to stand before you and tell you a little bit about myself, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Okay, the next one would be Ed Lyra. Ed, come on up. Good to see you.
Good evening, Council and fellow citizens in here. I appreciate your support.
Good evening, council and fellow citizens in here. I appreciate your support and your time listening to me speak. Just introduce myself. I've been out here for 14 and a half years as a resident. And during that time, I've actually taken the time to listen to concerned citizens, as a citizen, other concerns of the town, issues that the town has been facing. And I share with them my concerns I had too as well, and my experiences with, like, roads and the police department, for example, and my outcome of the issues. And they all just blew those off. What I, my whole approach was to be more proactive, get involved with them, be more positive. And so throughout the whole entire time, though, that I've been out here, like, just giving some examples, I just decided, though, that I have a strong desire to run for office, and this is an opportunity for me to at least try and use my skills from my education. I have a degree in Business Administration. I'm sure that might prove handy. You know, I mentioned I'm a lateral thinker. I look at issues, I've attended city council meetings here and there. Some of you see me here. I've actually stayed at home and listened to you guys speak. And I actually, given all that said, I actually do have a idea that this is a very intricate, you know, form of government. It's never-ending to learn new things, new concepts, and you have to have an open mind. And I do have that. And so, given that as well, I just want to let you know I do support all forms of government you guys have, the departments, the water resources, and anything that may need to be improved on for that. And I do have an approach, and that is being more proactive with all of those people, and making sure that the funds are there for them, and making sure that we make approach where it's more conservative in a way, but also we listen to what the people have to say that live in our community and take their concerns much more seriously. And I've done that too as a citizen. And I just feel that, you know, if I want to continue to live out here another 14 years, like I have, I just want to get back to my community. Because whenever I asked for roads to fix my road, the street I lived on, you know, they told me this is going to take a while. I asked them why, and they said because of the weather and other issues. And I had told them, "Thank you." And they go, "Well, why did you want us to fix the road anyways?" And I told them, "Because my car got damaged. And I'm not going to charge you guys to fix that." So it's all about compromising too as well. And it takes a special leader to do that, though, actually, and with the community and with the services that we have. And law enforcement, though, my dealings with them have never been anything negative. They've done their job. I'm very pro-law enforcement. One example is, I got pulled over one time. A cop thought I was drunk, and I wasn't. I was just dead tired. And I told them, "Thank you." And all it takes is just being very positive the whole entire time. And I want majorly influence that, though, with citizens that always have a positive outlook when you deal with, you know, our forms of government. And if they feel that otherwise, then I'm going to look into that, because I have experience dealing with these areas. And most importantly, though, I know that you guys have looked at my application. It's missing one document that is concerning me. In November, I, it was towards the end of the election, I worked for Senator John McCain. And I barbecue attended with him. I asked him, "Hey, listen, I want to run for office, though. I want to apply for the vacancy in Prescott Valley. Would you endorse me?" He goes, "Yes, I will." And so I've been waiting for a formal letter from him. I just got off the phone with him, his people today, and it's honest way, it's going to be a couple of weeks, so I can have that formal endorsement, and I will submit it to the town if necessary. I'll have it for myself, you know. But he did endorse me. And he knows that I'll be very sincere in my approach to serve the citizens of this community. And like I said, during the whole entire time, though, I love this community so much that, I know there's lots of concerns, but there's this, I know it's a broad perspective of what this town does. And knowing that, I'm going to apply lateral thinking, like I mentioned in my application. I'm going to do my very best to give exact answers, you know, for what is done. I'm going to have a solid answer, not just someone, something that's dumbfounded. I'm going to do my research. I'm going to spend probably 40 hours a week on all aspects of what is presented before me and my fellow council members, if I'm lucky enough to be selected. Any concerns you guys have?
We're not going to ask questions tonight. We're going to listen to you speak.
Okay.
Good, appreciate that. Thank you.
I think I'm done now.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, next is John Yader. John, you're up. Good to see you.
Good evening, Harvey and councilmen, or members. I'm John Yader. I'm reading tonight, which I normally don't do. I've lived in this community for 21 years with my incredibly wonderful wife and my boys. During that time, I've watched Prescott Valley grow and mature into a vibrant community it is today. I've had the pleasure to both work in the community professionally and participate in decisions made by town leadership as both council member and planning and zoning commissioner. I am currently serving as the chairman of planning and zoning. I would like to continue serving town, the town, again, in the capacity of the town council member. While I am aware of the issues that face the town and the town council in the near and mid and long terms, I quickly, I'm a quick study, and I'm prepared to devote the time and energy necessary to come up to speed in order to be contributing member of the town council. I believe I have the experience, the cooperative demeanor to fill, to fit well in the current leadership in the town council. I have a history of working successfully with the town's professional staff, and I look forward to the opportunity to meet with Mayor Skoug and the town council to, in furtherance of my consideration to fill the vacancy position. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next, Jody Rooney. Jody, good to see you. Appreciate your coming out.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you so much for the invitation. I appreciate being here this evening. I'm a 10-year resident of Prescott Valley. My husband and I moved here for the opportunity to run the transportation planning organization here in our region. With that, I got to know a lot of the staff in the region, in the different municipalities, in the county, our council persons, got to learn about the politics in our region, and the wonderful opportunities along with the issues that are facing us as we move forward. I currently work in transportation for ADOT. I'm proud to work for ADOT, and have proud to, I've worked with Norm as well, who does a good job. I see that our town's roads here, I have to disagree. I think our roads are in pretty good shape. I like our summit that we have. I like what's happening here. I am a team player. I'm professional. I'm diplomatic. I like to get things done, and I have demonstrated that I do get things done. As we move forward, I look at the general plan, and by the way, I agree with it. And I like the strategies that we have in the general plan. That's going to take people who work together. We have really good leadership here on the council. I would like to be a part of that as a team player. One thing I know about this particular job, and, you know, Casey and I, sometimes we'll sit in bed and we watch council. We love this. And we talk, because we know this is a hard job to do. You have to have thick skin. And I can tell you multiple, public hearings that I've been at, public meetings, having worked in government for multiple years, and you have to be able to listen to people. There's always two sides of the story. And I know that you do that. I've seen that before with you. That's what I do as well. I would like to be able to participate with you in the decision-making that's going forward. We have a lot of growth that's happening here. And my strength is transportation. And as we look forward for the region and our connections in all different modes, that's going to be something I think I bring to the table. That's going to be helpful. I think that because we have been conservative, that's going to bode well with us as we move forward. I have experience with contracts, with budgets, with operations, with managing people. I love my town. I want to be here now, and I'm going to be here in the future. I've made an investment here. I currently serve as a commissioner on the Arts and Culture Commission, and I like that. And I thank you so much for allowing me to do that. I want to continue to do that here. I appreciate that you would consider me, and humbly would ask that you would bring me back for a chance to be able to come and join you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody. Appreciate that. Okay, next would be Donald Packard. Don, welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Don Packard. I'd like to serve the Prescott Valley Town Council. My wife Darlene and I have lived in Arizona since 2000, in Prescott Valley since 2004, and have watched it grow. I would very much like the opportunity to help to continue its positive direction. Prescott Valley is becoming more important in regional development and regional cooperation, and I believe I have the attributes to be part of the process. The attributes of being a team player and a good listener come from 25 years of supervisory experience as a Air Force man and as a phone company tech, and six years as a congressional liaison dealing with constituents' concerns. I take an active part in our community through volunteerism. As vice president of the Town Municipal Property Commission, which recommends large bonding projects for the town and refinancing the current bonds at lower rates, I have a strong insight to the town's finances. As a board member of the Prescott Valley Historical Society, we give back to the community through our projects, which include trees for Fane Park, benches for the Glassford Hill Trail and American Legion Park, and the banners on Robert Road. I participated in the Town Good Works Program under the Code Enforcement Division by cleaning the properties of citizens who were in code violation but did not have the means to do it by themselves. Our certified therapy dog, Sailor, takes me to visit patients in the VA Hospital, Yavapai Regional Medical Center East Campus, and I do home hospice visits. Also, I am on the evaluation team for these pet partners of certification process. For 14 years, I have been an information desk volunteer at the VA Hospital. Because I interface with many veterans, I was asked to serve as a member of the Health Promotion and Disease Prevention Committee, whose primary purpose is educating the veterans. I am on the VFW flag crew for Highway 69, where we place flags on holidays, along with our brother outfit, the American Legion. We also pick them up. I'm a member of St. Germain's Faithful Friends, whose purpose is to lend emotional and physical support for parishioners who have lost loved ones. I'm a graduate of the second Citizens Academy class, and also serve as a presenter on the historical aspects of the Prescott Valley in subsequent classes. Darlene and I have been members of the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce for 10 years, and volunteered for seven years for the Valley of Lights, and we participate every May in the team-up to clean up. As a member of the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, I understand the importance of the three-legged stool economic development. I believe my attributes of dependability, accountability, integrity, transparency, openness, openness, and the ability to focus on desired and results, and then use innovative methods to reach them goals would make me an effective member of the council. As a team player, it would be an honor to serve with you and work for the betterment of our community. Thank you for your time and opportunity to come before you.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate that. Okay, next is Charlotte Bradford. Charlotte, you back there? Good to see you. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, I'm here tonight. Well, let me say good evening to all of you, and thank you for your time and your efforts to listen to all of us. And I don't envy your decision with all the wonderful, talented people that are here. But I'm here today to, as an applicant for that council seat right there, where Stephen Marshall used to sit. And I just spent a year competing for a council seat in this town by running my own campaign and raising the funds to do so. And I garnered the support of close to 3,000 people, voters in this town, and I was the runner-up to the four incumbents. And I got many more votes than the other four candidates who were running as well. My experience over the years has included holding an elected office in Michigan, and I was also in law enforcement as a juvenile probation officer in Detroit. And I think we have quite a few people from Detroit here in this town, as I'm finding out. And after moving to Phoenix then, we had to go for my husband's job. I got involved in local politics and was appointed to the Camelback, East Camelback Village Planning Committee down there, where we studied various issues such as transportation, buses and light rail, as well as future freeway placements, building schedules, and many zoning issues that were involved in the growth of Phoenix. And that was a long, hard effort that had a great payback for me, and I really appreciated the opportunity to do that. And after moving here to Prescott Valley, I attended the Citizens Academy as well as some of the others, where I learned a lot about our local government and the unique way that it is run. And one thing that impresses me the most is the amount of volunteers with the experience that they have, that they lend to this town and make a real difference here. And I know there are plenty of them at the library. After graduating from the academy, I was appointed to a position as a trustee on the library board, and I've been serving in that capacity for the last two years so far. And in early 2016, I decided I would run for the town council, because I feel it would be an honor and a privilege to serve as a council member here in Prescott Valley. I have the time, I have the passion, and I have the experience to devote to this position. It would be my pleasure to serve our town and its people. And I really thank you for considering me for this opportunity. Thank you all.
Charlotte, really good. Appreciate that. Okay, the next one would be Barney Barber. Mr. Barber, come on up.
Mayor, council, city manager and staff, my name is Barney Barber, resident of Prescott Valley. Thank you for the opportunity to present my credentials and platform as it relates to the open position on the city council. We have my background via my submission papers. My extensive time in corporate America, holding executive positions in management and senior management, has prepared me for this opportunity. My career was all-consuming, but I did find time for public service. I've been involved over the years in my local communities volunteering and serving on various boards. Two examples: serving on the executive board of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce and a sewer and water commissioner of both Yorkville and the Village of Caledonia. I have a sense for what's worked and what doesn't. If appointed, I would concentrate and support the five following objectives. One, a strong police presence. Take care of the little things. Rolling through stop signs, excessive speeding. Example during my working career, as a plant manager of a struggling plant in Ohio, a situation developed early in my tenure. An employee deliberately destroyed the toilets in the men's bathroom. A plant superintendent wanted to close the bathrooms. I said, "No, replace the toilets." What if they destroy them again? I said, "We'll replace them again. If we take care of the little things, we can turn this plan around." And that was the start of moving the plant from the lowest to the highest in financial contribution in the division. Same for the police department. Take care of the small things, and we can have a safer community. Two, a strong infrastructure which includes roads, sewer, and water. Two, a strong infrastructure which includes roads, sewer, and water. Good, solid roads are the artery of a community. This also sends a message to the community and visitors that Prescott Valley cares for its citizens. Take care of the roads, and the citizens will help and support the community. A sewer and water system that has excess capacity is key to future development. You cannot bring new development, especially manufacturing, which is high on everyone's list, without excess sewer and water capacity. It's like saying, "Come to my concert," but when you arrive, you are turned away because the concert is full. As a previous Sewer and Water Commissioner of the Village of Caledonia, I experienced firsthand that expanding the sewer and water to the interstate immediately expanded the commercial base and increased the revenue stream for the village. Three, open spaces, parks and recreation. I have lived in communities with limited open spaces. They are not very pleasant places to live. And some had adequate open spaces, but not enough police presence to keep them safe, which goes to my first point. As a guiding principle of the master plan, incorporate that for every 10 acres of development, there must be one acre of open space. As HOA President of the Gifford Woods Homeowners Association in my previous community, we invested dollars to create new and maintain existing spaces for all residents to enjoy. Four, a proactive government. Create a city staff that learns to say yes and not no. People look for help, not roadblocks. When development occurs, local government must be, must help in expediting the process: permitting, funding, regulations. Five, and how do we pay? A city sales tax on goods and services. I'm a strong advocate of consumption tax via sales tax. Everyone pays versus tax a few, as in local property tax. And now that Proposition 440 has passed, Prescott Valley would need to wage an ad campaign to gain support from the community for any further tax increase. I will summarize my five points. A police presence: take care of the little things. Two, infrastructure: goods, roads, excess sewer and water capacity. Three, open spaces: maintain and expand parks and recreation. Four, a proactive government: support local commercial growth. Five, city sales tax to support good government. I value the decisions that the Prescott Valley City Council has made to make Prescott Valley a better community. I have attended many city council meetings and have watched that dynamic relationship among the council members. I know I would be a good fit on the current Prescott Valley City Council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Appreciate that. Okay, number 10. That would be Linda Cartwright. Linda, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Can I lift the microphone just a little bit?
A little bit, sure. Is that better?
Better.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I appreciate your time this evening. I didn't come tonight to debate issues. I came to discuss the qualifications and the characteristics of a person who would serve on town council, and why I believe I have those characteristics and qualifications. My husband and I lived in Chandler, Arizona for 20 years, and we determined that we wanted to relocate to a smaller town but still be able to continue a 25-year history of volunteerism, community outreach, and public service. And we saw that in Prescott Valley. I started at the local church level. I've served on several church boards. From there, I associated with organizations that brought churches together to benefit the city and to do citywide events. As a result of those and the interaction with the city of Chandler, I was asked to serve as co-campaign manager for Nora Ellen's campaign for city council, successful in 2012. And that also brought me to the attention of the mayor, who appointed me to the Board of Adjustment for the city of Chandler, where I served for about three years. In addition to that, I served for many, many years on my homeowners association, and I served as a liaison between the homeowners association and the city of Chandler Neighborhood Advisory Committee, where we not only worked on issues involving my community or my neighborhood, but also seeing the overall picture of the issues that all the neighborhoods in the city were facing. In my career history, I worked for a company for 16 years that was involved in real estate development, and they developed commercial, industrial, small strip malls. They were involved in golf courses and large planned communities, a little bit of everything. And they also had a specialized arena in which they did real estate acquisitions and construction and development, as well as ownership and management of automotive dealerships all across the United States. And during the 16 years I was there, I was involved in all aspects of that company. So from a developer's standpoint, I do have some background and understanding what developers coming into a town are looking for. I understand development agreements. I understand the negotiations that go on, from who is going to pay for the traffic light or the roundabout, to are we going to do shared costs of infrastructure, or who will pay for extending water or sewer, and what that's going to look like. I was also asked in my later years by the CEO to take on a position as Licensing Compliance Administrator, which position involved overseeing corporate maintenance and licensing and compliance issues for the automotive dealerships. I was responsible for 114 automotive dealerships and over 300 active corporate entities that comprised the ownership of the automotive dealerships and the real estate holdings. I believe that that gives me a good foundation, along with my experience in working on a town board, because I do understand what's involved in working on a board or a commission, and reviewing your packets, and the time commitment that's necessary, the research that needs to be done in order to be a contributing member. And I also understand that not one person can know everything, and the ability to reach out and get information and to educate yourself better on the issues that are being addressed. So those are qualifications that I believe would serve me well on serving on town council. The characteristics of someone working on town council are you have to have the ability to set aside your personal perceptions and what you believe is the right methodology when it's contradicted by the facts and the timing of the situation, because you have to be able to see the bigger picture. And I see this, I think Newton's Third Law says it best, because for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. And that means for every decision that a council member makes, it is going to impact all the other departments in the town. It's going to impact the town residents. And I want to use an example, but I didn't really want to debate issues, and it doesn't necessarily represent my personal opinion. But I have heard people say, "Well, there shouldn't be a sales tax on food, because food is a necessity, and it's not right to charge sales tax on the food." But when you understand that 90% of the town's revenue comes from sales tax, and the implications and the impact of not having sales tax on food, then you're looking at reduced services, you're looking at reduced programs, and it begins a domino effect, which is where you have to see the bigger picture. Now, I've heard people say, "Well, there's a lot of fat in the town budget, and there's things to be cut out." I had one individual who said, "We should not, the town should not be supporting an arts program, because if people want an arts program, then the people should stand behind that and support it and put it into place." But those dominos continue to fall, and eventually, they're going to fall in reality. And the reality is that these manufacturers that are coming into the town, and if that's what the citizens of Prescott Valley want, is they want to see these manufacturers come in and they want to see these higher-paying jobs, well, these people coming in, they have criteria that a town or a city needs to meet. And in the case of Lockheed Martin, if there had not been an arts program, we would not have those 200 higher-paying jobs that they brought into the town of Prescott Valley. So you have to be able to set aside your personal opinions and perceptions and be able to look at the larger picture. So why do I want to serve on town council? Well, one reason is it's simply in my DNA. That's what I have done for 25 years. And one of the organizations that I was involved with is a group called, excuse me, For Our City. And they are all about mobilizing volunteerism and taking all the individual volunteer pockets within a town or a city and bringing them together to create a larger volunteer pool for city government or town government to access. My background is in community outreach, and it's in volunteerism, and it's in putting volunteers together. So I think what I personally could bring to town council, and I'm not negating in any way the huge picture of all the issues that need to be addressed: the roads and the infrastructure and the police and the hospitals and the fire department and all the things that have priority. But I believe I could bring an element of public awareness, because being a small town, the city of Chandler had 250,000 residents as opposed to about 45,000 that's here in Prescott Valley. You are dealing with a staff, operating staff, that is 50% of what an equivalent population or populated city or town operates with. And that means that you are heavily reliant upon volunteers and continuing to increase the volunteer basis to meet the town's needs. And that's something that I could bring in, is that background and history in volunteerism and working with organizations to mobilize volunteers and create a larger volunteer pool. Now, I've heard some pretty impressive comments this evening, and I know there's a lot of stiff competition out there. I would be very grateful to be considered as a finalist and come back next week. I'd like to share more, some ideas of programs that I think could be brought into Prescott Valley that would enhance the growth and increase our levels of volunteerism. And also in neighborhood outreach and education, the raising public awareness also as a part of that, to understand how the town council operates, where the revenues come from, and how they're expended. Because the bottom line is, we need to deal with the facts and not who can shout the opinions the loudest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate that. Okay, number 11. Gary Roberts. It's good to see you, Larry. Appreciate you coming on.
I didn't know we went through that many people.
What?
I didn't know we went through that many.
Yeah, it's...
Well, to me, it's an honor to face you this morning, the mayor and the council. It's really a great opportunity to serve this community. I think it's important, it's a little background on my family. I have two beautiful daughters, eight gorgeous grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. My wife and I have been married 53 years. Of course, I lost her this past February to cancer, but she was a great backbone, and she was really a strong person in my life. But we came here together 10 years ago, and that's came before this board introducing my business, which was because I joined the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a member to this day. But anyway, we took a 600-square-foot building, and over the period of nine years, we've expanded our business to 1,800 square feet. And that's because of the community is, this community is so close. I mean, when my wife passed away, I couldn't realize how many cards I got and people coming in my business, just asking about her and so forth. But anyway, I gotta put my glasses on now, because I had cataract surgery. Now I can't read without glasses, before I could. But anyway, I explained to you about my family. I've been married 53 years. And the thing that's important to me is that I have the experience in government. I served as a state legislator in Nevada, judiciary, taxation, and economic development, which are, the judiciary and taxation is very important committee, very important committees. And I think I can bring the experience to this and be a team player. As you know, I serve on the Planning Commission as a member for Prescott Valley. I also serve here in the community in several different areas. I'm a chaplain at the Yavapai Medical Center, and I volunteer twice a month. I also serve as a pastor for Calvi Radio Station. I do a broadcast once a month, Val Prazel, Indiana. And I also have experience in local townships. As you look at my resume, I was a vice chairman of the Planning Commission in Yates Township, Michigan. Also, I was a member, I also serve as a fireman. I also served there as a man of opportunity, zoning and so forth and so on. What I wanted to share with you is that my state legislative experience that I have is very valuable. I learned that there's more than one opinion, and I learned to work with people. I've been appointed to a lot of committees, like in Michigan, I don't know if Larry knows some of the people there who was in government, but I served as a liaison for Tom Brown, just did ceremonies and so forth for him. And also, I was appointed to the Economic Development Committee for the state of Michigan. I also served on a cable committee for guidelines for Canton Township. I also served as the bonding for Knight's Hotel in Canton, Michigan. So I'm familiar with government, how it works. But one of the things I want to share with you, the three principles I believe in government, and it's no different than the state, and that is establishing policies and programs for effective delivery of town service, approval of the annual financial plan and budget, providing all ordinance and rules and regulations for the welfare of the town. And it's no different than what we did in the state of Nevada, the same principles. And I really don't have too much more to say. I'm a little nervous, I must say, and I shouldn't be, being a pastor, but sometimes you get that way. But I do have the experience. I think it can be an asset. I would love to be on the board. And the four years I served on the Planning Commission has been enjoyment, and I hope I can move up. So, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that. Okay, I think we've done them all. All we need now is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is a second, and we will be getting back to you in the next few days. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Diane, you want to do the, I don't know, roll or whatever, roll call?
Mayor, I don't believe we need to do that tonight, because it is a work study.
Okay, work session. I'm sorry. We've, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. By the way, you all did a great job. We appreciate that.